Before we start, though, we always try to take this time to honor people that are especially important to the city that who passed away. Tom Mahan Senior has died. Mr. Mahan grew up on Arlington. He's raised by two immigrants from Ireland, joined the Army in fifty-four, served in Korea. Started teaching in Boston, but he moved up here and he and his wife raised their kids here. He taught for thirty-four years in our school department. History, geography, he was at the Jackman School, Brown School, he was principal at the old Kelly School. He was an assistant principal at the high school. And the class of sixty-eight actually dedicated their yearbook to him up at the high school. He's a longtime parishioner of Immaculate Conception, a member of local groups. He really was a very accomplished historian. We'll miss him. Noreen Pramberg, who was born Noreen Cook, she's also passed away. Ms. Pramberg grew up in Oklahoma and Wyoming. She was in the Air Force during the Korean conflict. It was through the Air Force she met Hack Pramberg, John Pramberg, in the fifties and they moved here. And lived here forty-odd years. Mr. Pramberg died in two thousand and five, but he's well-known to all of us for his work on urban renewal. He's one of the heroes of that that effort. Ms. Pramberg worked in medicine and health. She was on the boards of director of Massachusetts Lung Association. The Newburyport Health Center, which is now defunct, the Swayze Fund, Report District Nursing Service. She was involved in the Amesbury Methodist Church, I've read. Also, she was a big genealogist, wrote several books. For a time, she was a trustee in our library. And she was one of the donators of books to what is now our archives. So let's just have a moment of silence for the loss of these two people. Thank you. Let's call the roll.
Roll call for the meeting of December fourteenth, Councilor Wallace.
Here.
Councilor Zede.
Here.
As Councilor Devlin joined us.
Doesn't look like it.
Councilor Khan.
Present.
Councilor Lane.
Here.
Councilor McCauley.
Present.
Councilor Connell.
Present.
Councilor Shan.
Present.
Councilor Tontar.
Present.
Councilor Vogel.
Present.
And Council President Argon.
Here.
You're ten present, one absent. We have a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, I'll just check the attendees one last time for wayward counselors. I don't see any. Late file items.
There are three items, and I sent them around. I hope you all received them. Order two twenty-nine is relative to the Brown School disposition. And fifty-seven Low Street. There is also not really a late file, it's a revision. The original version of two fourteen is now before you. The amended version was in the packet. We've removed that and replaced it. And we have communication two eighty-one, which is the memo from Councilor Wallace to the executive branch. Those are three items.
All right, well, let's break those up because we, one of, Councilor Khan lives near the Brown School. She's had to recuse herself before, so. Let's do them one at a time. Your motion?
Motion to waive the rules and accept this late file item.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, I didn't hear any opposition. Next one.
Would be the memo from Councilor Wallace, communication two eighty-one, I think.
Well, let's, let's do the original version of two fourteen. That's the next one in order.
Okay.
Motion to waive the rules to accept this late file item.
Second.
Oh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And then last, the communication two eighty-one from Councilor Wallace.
Motion.
Motion to waive. Second.
Mark, did you get that?
I had a wave of three motions. And I know there was a clear second by Councilor McCauley.
I think Councilor Tontar was first out of the gate, but I.
There we go. Any discussion on waiving the rule to accept this one? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opponents? No, okay. So let's. Counselor Devlin, let the record show, Counselor Devlin has joined us. So we're on item. Four. Public comment. So public comment. The rules are fairly simple. Everyone gets two minutes. All you have to do is raise your hand electronically. Which there's a button, you know, in Zoom. You state your legal name and address, so we know who you are for the record, and then anything on our agenda you can speak on. Observing decorum, of course. I have. Agent Hunt, let me start with him. Veterans Agent Hunter, are you on?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Council President and Council Members. My name is Kevin Hunt. I am the Veteran Officer for the City of Newburyport. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to vote on two measures that are important to veterans. One measure called twenty-two H grants a real stack exemption for a gold star parrot. The other measure, twenty-two G validates a veteran's rights of ownership in special circumstances. I strongly urge your adoption of both of these measures, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Next is Dr. Elizabeth, Eliza Boback. Unmute her. Dr. Boback, can you hear us?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Eliza Boback. I am at ninety-two Prospect Street in Newburyport. And I am joining tonight to advocate for a permanent home for Newburyport Youth Services. I am in my nineteenth year of working with youth and education. I know how important a permanent safe home for our children and families is, and. I would like to strongly advocate for a home that is an alternative to the Brown School location. I'm embarrassed that Newburyport Youth Services is still there, frankly. I am the mother of two children in town that have benefited greatly from all that Youth Services has offered them. And we have an opportunity. I really don't want to see it wasted. To be honest, I haven't been following. All of the maybe recent developments, but wherever it stands right now, I wanted to really advocate for the possibility of a permanent home at the possible Low Street location at fifty-seven Low Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Next is Rachel Linderman. Ms. Blinderman, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Hi, my name's Rachel Blinderman. I'm at nine Ashland Court. I am a parent of a seventh grade student at the NOC. And I'm also a founding board member at the Friends of Newburyport Youth Services. So I've been working obviously very closely with Youth Services, kind of following this. Campaign to potentially purchase fifty-seven Low Street. With the, you know, intended use to rebuild Newburyport Youth Services. My son and many of my friends in this community have utilized Youth Services throughout the years, and I just, I, I feel like it's an, it's an excellent sort of no-brainer opportunity for the city to build a youth department that's sustainable, that's really sustainable over, over time. That the youth can grow into. And really what I think is so unique about this property is that it creates equitable access for all of our students. It's a centralized location. Students will be able to access it. From almost any one of the schools, including the charters and the parochial schools. And I just really, really urge everyone to, to consider fifty-seven Low Street for building a new youth center. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Elizabeth Gulo. Ms. Gulo, could you, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I'm good. Yeah, my name is Elizabeth Gulo. I live at nine Marquand Lane in Newburyport. And I also would like, well, I'd like to advocate for the purchase of Low Street. I, I think from what I've heard and read, it certainly seems like that, that is definitely an opportunity we shouldn't pass up. Looking at some of the writings back and forth and some of the information about the, the restriction, attaching the conservation restriction to it. It seems to me that it is not something that is needed, especially at this time. I feel like the experts in the city who work in that field specifically have said that it's not needed. At least at this time. And so I would be confused as to why we would add that at this time. It seems to me, and I'm just telling you what it sounds like when I'm reading it and listening. Is that there's an agenda to make sure that it is not used for Newburyport Youth Services. So that bothers me. I do think that it's certainly a central location for NYSS. I understand that there are other possible uses. I think that there can be a lot of discussion about what could potentially go in there. But for me, I, I want to listen to the experts on the CR, and I also, you know, have heard from people about why it may or may not be a good place for NYSS, but again, I think that the experts on what NYSS needs are the, the people who work for NYSS and not necessarily city councilors or even parents. I don't consider myself an expert on that, but I will say as a parent, the Brown School is much too far away. The, the, having it right where the schools are makes perfect sense. Brown is not near any school, and it's really at the edge of Newburyport. So I would like to advocate for the property, for the purchase of the property without the CR. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Quinn Campbell. Just, just a second, bear with me here. Mr. Campbell? I, I think, there you go.
Use the pronouns.
I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't. I apologize. Ms. Campbell.
Yeah, I'm actually on my daughter's laptop. She's going to speak after I do. My name is Kathleen Shaw, and I am at nine Upland Road in Newburyport. First off, I guess I want to advocate as well about the use of the property at Low Street and building an appropriate building there to house Youth Services. Mike, I'm coming at this from, as a parent of our two children who went through the Youth Service System, who then also became Youth Service Employees. I work intermittently as a consultant for Youth Services, running parent groups in the area, as well as a monthly parent group for our parent grandparents who are raising their grandchildren. And I've also been very fortunate with Youth Services to share per own three NYSS service trips to Kenya, to the FGM Rescue Center. So there's a wide range of services that Youth Services has providing students and families in this community. I'm also work as a social worker. Newburyport is my catchment area. I have the opportunity to work with many different kinds of families, of different socioeconomic groups. And my concern is with the use of the Brown School, like right now, we have the remote, the REC Remote Program, which is primarily, to the greatest part, is being used by low-income students. Or working-class families. And it seems to me kind of a classism thing that we have a Brown School, which is not handicap accessible. And poses safety as far as asbestos, and who knows what else in that building. It's a very old building. So that, that's a concern, the continued use of the Brown without significant investment of money to make it handicap accessible and to make it safe.
Ms. Shaw, can you, can you wrap up? We want to give a chance also. Yeah.
Yes, so I support the Low Street site be purchased and that an adequate building be placed there. Now, my daughter is going to speak.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Quinn Campbell. I'm also at nine Upland Road, and I'm also here to advocate for the Low Street Home for NYSS. I'm twenty-one years old now. I'm a senior in college, and I have really grown up with NYSS. I've taken their programs from elementary school. I went to the Brown, the, when it was the Kelly School, the drop-in center during my middle school years, and like, that was so formative and so special. I mean, then I did end up being a counselor at Clipper Kids at Perkins when I was in high school, but in college. And yeah, I just want to echo what my mom said, like, definitely, it needs to be centrally located. We're talking about access here, and people, kids can walk right from the middle school or the high school. It's not too far from the Brezner Hand. It's in the middle of the city. There's way more parking. There's always been a parking problem at Brown, and I'm sure a Butters would have things to say about that. And I just really want you to consider a youth perspective, a little older youth, but it's still important. And we need to make our community, if we want, accessible and welcoming to new families. And the NYSS at the Low Street, I think, would absolutely enable it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, hold on, bear with me here. Next is Jared Hubbard.
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Jared Hubbard of forty-nine Boardman Street. I just wanted to echo the many citizens who've already spoken. I do think the fifty-seven Low Street location would be a great future home for NYSS. I don't think that needs to be determined tonight, but I do think the purchase should go ahead and be determined tonight. I've reviewed Councilor Wallace's memo, and I think that, you know, the, the city has already done a significant amount of due diligence on this property. Certain parts of the, of the memo, including a certification of the wetland boundary, are just not going to happen until we purchase the property. DCAM is not, it was already discussed, the DCAM is not willing to go through additional processes like that, and that was discussed at the October meeting. And, and so I think, though, the question is, you know, is this piece of property useful for the city? And it is absolutely useful for the city. The city is in fact already using this piece of property. And then is the, is it worth the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars? And, you know, there was some discussion of that, but buying a piece of property in this location close enough to the city, and as, as many others have mentioned, in a very central location for the city. For this value is, it's a tremendous value, and I think we need to go ahead and move on this, and pushing this off, you know, the perfect is the enemy of the good here, and, and trying to get perfect information is not possible, and it's particularly not possible given that we're working here with, with the state, and they, they have deadlines to meet, and, and we need to go ahead and, and move on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Haley Knudsen, just a second. Haley Knudsen?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So I live at seven Columbus Avenue. So I just wanted to introduce myself. I have three children aged from eighteen months to six years. My oldest two have attended numerous events, camps, lessons, activities with Youth Services. And I wrote to the council last week on this and received very detailed responses from a number of you, which I thank you for. But the, the overarching theme to me of those responses, from those who are against buying it and using it with Youth Services, was the cost of the building couldn't be justified, and that remediating the Brown School would save on costs. So I just want to talk to that very quickly, because I read an article today in the Daily News that spoke to those costs, and according to that article, the cost of, quote, minimal interventions at the Brown School would cost only seven hundred thousand dollars more than a brand-new purpose-built building at Low Street. And upgrading all the building systems at the Brown School would actually cost over a million dollars more than building a new building. So just to reiterate that, a new building at Low Street would cost only a little bit more than minimal intervention at the Brown School. And even if we do put that money into the Brown School, we'd still be left with a building with asbestos and hazardous waste, whose size limits the amount of programs NYSS can run, and there are waitlists for a lot of programs already, and which is inconvenient to much of the city who live outside the South End, which other people spoke with. So I'm a little confused as to why we think that improving the Brown School is actually the cheaper option. And if we're not looking at spending the necessary money to really improve the Brown School, then with respect, I really don't see what difference it will make to just put a million dollars into it. If we can't, we can't keep doing Band-Aid fixes of the building. At some point, we need to really address the root of the problem. I also understand that the building proposed on that, on that site for NYSS can be built in stages, so funding can actually be spread out. And also that we can secure funding from state grants, and also fund from the sale of the Brown School can go towards it to bring the cost lower. So if the fundamental issue is cost, I'd also like to understand what the cost of the buildings proposed to be built for parks would stack up. And I also, is there a reason?
Could you, could you wrap up, please?
Just wrapping up. So is there a reason why we can't make the decision to buy this land for what seems like a great price? And trust it for use by NYSS, but then allow grants to be sought in the first phase of the building to be constructed with a minimal investment from the city?
Thank you.
It just seems like we can be more creative with this.
Thank you very much. Next I have Zoom user. I don't, I don't have a name.
Okay, my name is Scott Nelson, fifty-five Milk Street.
Okay, yeah, please go ahead.
So I am a former vice president of the Creative Newburyport Family Club, and we're now getting very involved with Youth Services as well, and when I moved to this town, I was under the impression that there's a lot more. I'm meeting a lot like-minded people, but I'm very disappointed at the pace things have gone, and the fact that we're still in the Brown School and still debating this thing for what's going on, seems like six years now. I'm just, like I said, disappointed about the pace things are going, and the meeting last Thursday really disappointed me as well, because it seemed like we had some momentum, and just in the middle of the meeting, the tone changed. As if it was a done deal that Youth Services was no longer going to be considered for Low Street. So I'm hoping that with all this people showing up tonight, you see how it's important it is, and how difficult it is for us to mobilize at this time of night, so. You know, with kids, young children, we're not the most outspoken people, but when it's this important a thing to us, we're going to get together and try and support it. So hopefully you can purchase the property, keep an open mind, and understand that there are a lot of people who have, this is a number one priority in our minds in this town.
Thank you. Next is Mike Olson.
Hi, this is Mike Olson, twenty-eight Charles Street in Newburyport. I'd like to advocate for the purchase of the Low Street site, and also for the use of the site for Youth Services in the future. And I think one of the big things is, a lot of people have already said, you know, a lot of good things about the option of using Low Street, and I agree with all those things. I think one of the big things is that we need to consider a long-term solution for Youth Services. And spending a lot of money on the Brown School can provide an adequate location for Youth Services, but in the long run, it's not going to allow them to expand services to the youth and to the, to the city. And I think the Low Street site does provide that with the, the location and the other amenities that other people have mentioned. So I just think it's, it's a little short-sighted to a lot of money into Brown School and looking at that as a temporary location. When, and even if you put a lot of money in it, it still will be inadequate for Youth Services. So I think in the long run, you know, the long-term solution and the, and the best benefit for, benefit for the youth of the city and the city itself is to purchase Low Street and, and plan on having Youth Services located there. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on a second. John and Ryan Nickerson.
Hi, my name is Ryan Nickerson, three fifty-four High Street. I've spoken at a couple of the other meetings in reference to this, and I just wanted to continue my support of Newbury, Youth Services moving to the Low Street location. I think it's a no-brainer that we're going to purchase the land, but the question is how we're going to use it. I think it's really short-sighted of doing any kind of any, adding any environmental restrictions right now, tying our own hands for future use. So I just, so that's a big deal, and, you know, everyone's really said, I think they've covered down on a lot, but I think that what we're also showing is that people are willing to show up, and, and when we are coming together and, and supporting this issue, you know, I, I think that you need to listen to the voters of this community. So that's all.
Thank you. Next I have Nicole. I don't have a last name. Nicole?
Hi, my name is Nicole Yusefnia, and I'm on eighteen Longfellow Drive. I'm also advocating for permanent locations for the Youth Services Building at fifty-seven Low Street. I have two children who are ages eight and four, and I feel that in order to improve the mental health of our youth, we need a space that gives access to a greater number of young citizens to make their fullest potential and stay connected to others in their community. I think that NYSS has a staff, a vision, and the programs to help decrease mental health challenges we often see in our schools and communities. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay. Eric Sorsia. Sorry if I mispronounced your name.
That's all right. Eric Sorsia, from sixteen Borbo Terrace in Newburyport. Similar to the others, supporting Youth Services. We have a four and a six-year-old, and we've been attending programs at the Brown School for six years now. And I've been personally volunteering and, and running some dad events there for almost four years as well. We also did some other events there, Jim. I was part of the feasibility study and some of the, the meetings with the architects, and I also went through the similar process when I was in sixth grade. Growing up, and we moved a youth center directly across the street from our schools, and it made a big impact, and it was well-attended, because kids could walk there. So just like everyone else, you know, advocating for it, anything I can do to help. Thanks.
Thank you. Jane Snow. Jane Snow.
Good evening. Jane Snow, nine Coffin Street. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the council, the fire police, the DPW, our city employees, first responders, for all their efforts in this very trying year of two thousand and twenty. And this is the last opportunity to speak to all of you before, hopefully, we have a, a new year that is a little bit easier on all of us. So I want to wish you a safe, happy, healthy holiday season. And all of us can have our fingers and toes crossed for a much better twenty, twenty-one, and hopefully a time for all of us to meet in person. That would be wonderful. Thank you so much for all that you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Stephanie Nikotic.
Stephanie Nikotic, ninety-three High Street, here, here to Jane Snow's comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's it for public comment. Now Mayor's comment. Let me, I think everybody got an email from the mayor, but let me turn on our microphone. Mayor Holiday, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors, council president, members of the city council. Unfortunately, my beginning update tonight is on COVID nineteen. As of last night, there's a total of five hundred and seventy COVID nineteen cases in Newburyport, and we continue to see the number of cases increasing since October. Just to put this in perspective, there were a hundred and eighty-five new COVID cases, which nearly matched the entire count of cases from March through the end of September, two hundred and sixteen. We've already seen a hundred and sixty-nine cases in the first two weeks of December. In fact, I received an email from our health director just prior to this city council meeting that there was an additional four cases. So the positively rate, positively, positivity rate in cases is continuing to climb towards five percent. And that would elevate Newburyport into a high-risk community. The state tracks our positivity rate on a weekly basis, and as of December tenth, it was four point eight seven percent. We've had a few employees who have tested positive in the past several weeks, despite all of our efforts to contain COVID nineteen, and we've been working closely with the Health Department on tracking and quarantining. and tracing those cases. As you know, city municipal offices remain close to the public, except by appointment, online use. We are currently concerned about our water distribution team where we have one tested positive and five now in quarantine. And so that affects our emergency response team in the event of a water main break. But our leadership at D P H has reached out to a contractor that we have worked with previously, who's done tremendous work on Plum Island and Low Street, who has agreed to be on call for us in the event that we do have a water main break. Why our staff are out on quarantine. The other issue is that most of these employees plow and that we do have a storm coming on Wednesday night. Hopefully, it will not, we're looking at six to eight inches at this point. But as you know, things change all the time with storms in New England. So I'm asking residents to be very patient with us on Wednesday night because we will be down staff in terms of plowing. I also held our bi-weekly call with Mark Olstein, the C E O at Anna Jakes. We've reinstated those calls given the search that is happening. They currently have eighteen patients with COVID inpatient at the hospital, but they feel their capacity is good at this juncture. Twenty-eight employees have recently tested positive in comparison to fourteen during the initial surge in the spring. There certainly is a concern about an outbreak at the hospital. But so far, things are contained well. And the good news is, is that the first dose of the vaccine, yay, arrived today for three hundred and fifty staff who are eligible for phase one inoculation. And that will occur this Wednesday through Saturday. And it's a high priority directed towards those who are providing COVID care. I'm also pleased to report that A G H received a donation of a deep freezer from a company in Beverly that will help with the vast vaccine storage. Because as you've all heard, one of the vaccines requires a deep freeze. We've had a good conversation with A G H who will help us and work with the rollout once we hit phase three. Ways to go that will be probably around May when we start rolling out the vaccine for the general public. In the interim, we are surrounded by this virus. And I, it is climbing steadily. And the only thing that we know that is helping is wearing a mask, social distancing and sanitation, washing your hands. And I ask everyone to please really think about your plans for the holidays so we can keep this virus as flat as possible and hopefully moving in the other direction. The fifty-seven Low Street application, I thank all of the parents, the youth who spoke tonight in favor of this purchase on Low Street. It was clear from the Thursday night meeting that there still are outstanding questions by the council. And so I was able to reach out to the people at D C A M on Friday, and they gave us a sixty-day extension on closing, which gives us a little more time to be able to address your questions and concerns. I thank councillor Wallace, who sent a detailed memo to myself and Chief of Staff Coogan today, as well as the council. Please send your questions and concerns to me and Matt so that we can begin to put together a response to some of your outstanding questions or concerns. We have a lot of work to do in the next sixty days to be able to move this forward. I know one piece of information that was really important to the council was where are we with capital needs, capital priorities for this year? I have attached a second memo in my with my update tonight to the council that talks about our priorities for capital needs. We're still struggling with some of the bonding issues and trying to, you know, figure out, you know, all of those needs and where our capacity is. And we are hoping that with additional information, we have a a meeting tomorrow with the state on revenue projections. We're hoping that we will have a clearer picture by the time we come to the joint meeting of the school committee and city council on the twelfth. But please do send additional questions or concerns about the Low Street purchase to myself and Matt. And we will try to work with the subcommittees that have the Low Street site in their committee to address those issues. I am really pleased to announce it took us three tries. But we were able to be awarded a two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar grant through Mass D O T Shared Streets Program to expand this year's successful parklet program. These were the expanded restaurant outdoor seedings that we had with Jersey barriers. Now we will have beautiful wooden raised platforms with planters and guard railings that we will that real will accent our historic downtown and certainly make outdoor seating a lot more enjoyable and continue into the future. So we will be working with the state on those, on that grant and moving this forward to have this up and running weather permitting, April first. So we also will be doing some upgrades to the intersection and signaling at Pleasant and State Street. I'd like would also like to offer my support, as you heard from our Veterans Service Officer for the Veterans Brave Act for Sections twenty-two H and twenty-two G. And as this is your final council meeting of the year, thank you for all of your work. Thank you for your diligence. Thank you for your hours and hours of meetings. I would wish all of you and all of your families and everyone in our city a safe and happy and healthy holiday. I am hoping and praying that our our new year brings release of this COVID nineteen and, you know, from us and brings us back to semblance of normal normalcy, even if it takes us through until we hit the summer. But please be safe, enjoy the holidays, and thank you very much for all of your work during this difficult time during twenty twenty.
Thank you. Thank you. Happy holidays. Questions for the mayor, councillor Shand.
Mayor, thank you for everything you've done recently. And I'm just wanted to ask a quick question regarding Safe Roots to Schools. Sidewalks on High Street look really good, but I am wondering how we're going to get folks a place to park at Cushing since all of the equipment is still there for this snowstorm coming up. Do we have a, is there a thought that they might be moving out before Wednesday night?
I don't think so, councillor Shand, sorry. You know, I'm, I wish I had better news for you. They certainly have decreased their space in in Cushing Park. But I think that's where we are. I know the garage is a little far for them. But and we never really resolved the additional parking on Ken Street. But, you know, I first major storm, I don't think people need to be concerned that we're going to be doing a tremendous amount of towing of cars. Not to say that people should just forget about blue lights and park anywhere they want. But we tend to be a little lenient as we move forward through the first storms of the season. It's only six to eight inches is what's being predicted at this point. That's not very much. That's not very much.
I hope so. Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Councillor Z.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor Holiday, just a quick question for you, or maybe not so quick. But for the benefit of the the city councils, we head into this additional sixty days and residents. Can you please explain what is your position on Low Street as it relates to a a new youth services building? And if if the president will give me just a moment here. So my understanding was that, you know, going back to seventeen, we had the R F P and we looked at that. And we stopped, then we issued another one for some feasibility information. Then my understanding was, and I had asked during a previous mayor's update, and you had said that effectively you had moved on from the idea of a new building at Low Street. And so I, at least I can't speak for anybody else, but I was operating under that, that that was the administration's position. Then we had last Thursday, which was admittedly a tough meeting for many of us, trying to figure out where we're headed or how we got here or all of those things. And I think was a little confusing for residents too. So today is December fourteenth, just as we head into our next sixty days, at which point we try and hope to make a decision. What is your position, if you would, please be so kind as to tell us, where are you? Do you want to build a new building on Low Street? Do you wish to do so in the next year, two years, five years, done with that idea and moving to the Brown School? Some of us have also had conversations with staff, trying to ascertain the same information so that we can make logical decisions. And I'll just be quite blunt. I was told that Low Street was off the table and the administration was not pursuing that. I understand other councillors didn't get the same memo, so to say. It'd be really illuminating if you would help us so that we could have, I think, a more fruitful debate going forward and avoid last Thursday again.
Thank you, councillor Z. I think that that's a really important question. And you did ask me at a city council meeting, and I think the main reason why I said it was off the table was because my plan was to do a debt exclusion. Because of our our debt and our bonding capacity, I see a fire station as the highest priority, and we can't do both in terms of internal debt. So I had always planned to work with the council on doing a debt exclusion to raise eight million, do the without the gym, whatever. Come up with a number that made sense for the community that we would go forward with a debt exclusion. And I felt very strongly that, given this climate and the pandemic, that this wasn't the time to ask the voters to do a debt exclusion. You received a tremendous amount of emails, as I did, and phone calls. And I'm not sure that there is no appetite right now for a debt exclusion in the city to support a youth services. I have always wanted youth services at fifty-seven Low Street. That's where I began this process nearly three years ago and worked really, really hard with National Guard, having to work to change legislation because they didn't get the bill they wanted. I mean, this has been a grueling process over the last nearly three years to get this to a point where we're ready to close. And then the pandemic hit. So I I am open to the community if they're willing to pursue this direction for youth services. I think it's ideal for youth services across the street. Had worked with the council president on a C R because he felt that that was the only way that he could go forward in supporting the project. So we agreed to entertain that on the condition that we would get eight votes from the council, but we're not there either. So we have sixty days as a city council, as the mayor, as a community to figure out, can we move forward? I still feel that no matter what use happens for that site. And I will answer questions about potential other uses, costs to operate before we can do something with it. But I still believe, no matter what, we should purchase this property. There are very little land left in the city. Where can we get over two acres of land for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the city?
So Mayor, if I may, so I think I understand. So the the position is that as of today, you actually, you're not sure one way or the other, but you're open to the potential to ask the voters for an eight to some something million-dollar bond in the form of a debt exclusion at some point during the next calendar year. Is that a fair way to categorize it?
Thank you, councillor. Yes, I think that that's the the best way to answer a lot of the questions from the community at this point.
And do you anticipate being able to be a little finer with, you know, to refine that position within that sixty-day time period as we deliberate through?
Yes.
This, you do. Okay, so you will be able to say, yes, I would like to go for a debt exclusion during that sixty-day period. So that so the Low Street is is on the table again, so to say. Just again, want to understand the lay of the land here because we've been going around in circles to some degree, and I think it's been a little challenging. So I think I understand, and I I I think we'll have opportunities to address. Question time, I'll yield at the moment.
And even the other piece that I just wanted to throw out there that I think is important, even if we purchase the property and we let parks use it, you know, for the time being, until we figure out if we can, if this isn't the right time to do the debt exclusion and we wait a couple of years, then so be it. But I think there's options here. But either way, we can't lose the opportunity by not purchasing the property within sixty days. Thank you, councillor. I really appreciate the question.
Thank you. Councillor Connell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, thank you for your update. I would like to shift gears back to your your thinking about COVID and the city's response for just a moment. The numbers that we're seeing are are very serious. I won't say alarming, but very serious. And I I think that there's a tendency in people's minds to kind of relax a bit with the knowledge that a a group of vaccines will be available over the next six to eight months to inoculate a significant number of of our residents, and that's great news. But if we relax our diligence in terms of wearing face masks, doing our hand washing, maintaining social distance, it's going to be far worse before we get to that point of being immune in a large enough number to to kind of beat back the virus. So I'm wondering if you could put a sharper point on the options if these numbers don't start to come down. And the only way, until the vaccine is widely available, the only way is to really strictly maintain social distancing, personal hygiene, mask-wearing before we get there. What would the next step be if these numbers don't improve?
Well, I think there's no question about it because we're certainly working with the state. And the governor has been leading in terms of closure. He's already moved, rolled back this phase. I would suspect that it would happen again. I think that I do have an update tomorrow with Lieutenant Governor. But I suspect that if the numbers continue moving in the wrong direction, that we're going to see additional closures and going back to where we were in the spring. I know that will be incredibly difficult for businesses, but I don't think we have a choice. We're talking about saving lives here and people getting really sick. So again, I've been doing my P S A on a regular basis on Thursdays. I will start informing the council should things change in terms of where we are. As you know, I was doing two to three updates a week with you during the initial surge. And we'll we'll go back to doing that if, you know, more increased frequency should numbers continue to surge in the wrong direction. So the most important thing is that we can all just do what we know is important to contain the mask-wearing, social distancing and sanitizing. I'm so glad we didn't open City Hall. We're looking again at reducing schedules at City Hall, looking at T P S schedules. Police, fire, obviously first responders. Police went into a different schedule during the spring. I would like not to go back to that schedule. But at this point, and working with the schools too, we have a lot of challenges ahead of us until we get to the other end of this. But thank God the viruses, the vaccine is here.
Yeah. May I follow this, President? Yes, please follow.
Mayor, then are you saying that if these numbers don't start to improve, the city of Newburyport may become more restrictive than the state guidelines?
I would hope not. I've been following the state guidelines, but
None of us want that to happen.
Right, and I I really don't want
Get to lay the land here.
No, I don't really want to do that. I'd like to follow the direction of the state. And I I don't see us as being, you know, much, there are other communities that are in much worse shape than Newburyport, that's for sure. We're still not in the red. We're not close. We're not that far from hitting the red zone again and numbers climbing. But I would would like to see that we could, you know, move forward with where we are right now and hold. But, you know, again, we'll be reassessing on a weekly basis as we go forward and numbers coming in.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councillor Z, you raised your hand again, or is that an error?
No, I did want to ask one other question. I apologize. But so I I No, I did want to ask one other question. I apologize. But so I, I, I also appreciated the, the, the additional memo, Mayor, that you had mentioned about the near, the so-called near-term pays-to-go and the so-called near-term potential borrowing needs. So I'm a little bit, while I appreciate it, I, I must say I'm a little bit mystified at the, the fire department items. There, there's now ten million dollars for the, the fire headquarters and then five million dollars for Fire Station Two. It, it almost certainly is more than we could ingest in a meeting now when we've got lots of other stuff to do. But would you be so kind as to forward to the council or maybe just me if I'm the only one that wants it, anything and everything that's been produced on that by the consultants and so forth, just so that I can catch up on where that has been since we last talked about it? I think we actually were able to meet in person when we last talked about our member meeting at the senior center. So I would really like to understand where those two numbers in particular are, are coming from, just, just to understand how we got to fifteen million dollars.
Understand the question, Counselor Z. Those are really placeholders at this juncture. We're not quite there, but these are based on looking at Winter Street's presentation to the core group a couple of weeks ago on what they think it would cost to renovate headquarters. And then we have to do something at one thirteen. So we were trying to come up with a number and whether or not we can afford those in terms of bonding, not sure. So we're, those are just, they're not a hundred percent, but they're pretty close. So give me a, you have to give us a little more time in terms of teasing out all the particulars that can support those numbers. But those are, you know, rough numbers in terms of what we think we're going to need for both of those projects.
Thank you. I'll yield at, at this time. Thank you very much.
Other questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor. Have a happy, happy holiday.
Thank you. And to all of you, good night. Have a good meeting.
Good night. Thank you.
I think we're onto the consent agenda.
Okay, that, this evening consists of the approval of the minutes for November thirtieth. There are three communications. There are two applications seventeen and eighteen. They're both secondhand motor vehicle license requests. One is state automotive and one is LCA Motors. They're both been here before. They are to go to license and permits. Communication two eighty is a letter from the Newburyport Retirement Board regarding their calendar year budget for two thousand twenty-one. That's to be received and filed. There are no transfers. There are following appointments. First reading of appointment two oh five, Timothy Rooney, nine Marsview Circle, Seabrook, to the assistant, to be an assistant harbor master until twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Following our reappointments, appointment two hundred is David Zink, six Laurel Road to the, be, and the electrical inspector until January first, two thousand twenty-two. Next is the appointment of Jennifer Blanchett, appointment two oh one, which is to be referred to planning and development. She lives at Four Island Lane in Newbury. She would be the zoning administrator until twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. The following five are all assistant harbor masters until twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Appointment two oh two, Enrico Caruso, thirty-four Russell Hill Road, Haverhill. Appointment two oh three, James Orato, one sixty-seven Harper Ridge Road, East Hampstead, New Hampshire. Richard Popolo, one sixty-nine Apache Way, Tewksbury. We have appointment two oh six, Daniel Scott, sixteen Johnson Street, Windham, New Hampshire. And we have appointment two oh seven, Philip Stern, two seventy-one Merrimack Street, Unit Two. And those are the appointments. Following items ought to be removed from their respective committees with the motion to approve the consent agenda. Budget and finance, we have transfer eighty-six, transfer eighty-seven and order two twenty-two. Planning and development, we have, I'm sorry, Councilon Shan, either communication two fourteen or order two twenty-three. But the other two are not coming out, which would be order two fourteen and communication two seventy. Public safety, we have three items coming out, communication two twenty-seven, communication two seventy-eight and application sixteen. And that with the small change of what's coming out is the consent agenda this evening.
Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so that's it for that. Now onto the regular agenda.
Mayor's update.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. I know we added order two twenty-nine, but we do communications first. So I guess that's communication two eighty-one.
Communication two eighty-one is, as I mentioned, that is the memorandum from Councilor Wallace to the executive branch with respect to certain request on fifty-seven Low Street.
Motion refer to planning and development, budget and finance and committee of the whole?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's referred. Now we're on to order two twenty-nine.
Order two twenty-nine. Well, actually, I think we would be on to second reading of appointments.
Let me check that.
Before orders.
Oh, actually, actually, you were supposed to do that before communications. That's my fault. Okay, let's stick, let's stick to the way you agendized it. Second reading appointment?
Okay, this is appointment one ninety-nine, Kevin Wallace, forty Oak Street, Fruit Street Historic Commission until eleven thirty, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion to approve on second reading? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, let's do a roll call.
Roll call on that appointment. Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Iguan?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Now we're on to orders, sorry.
Notes. With as many lay files as we have, it's a little confusing.
Yeah, I know.
We have order two twenty-four, which is first up, starts with an emergency preamble, which is the emergency exists due to the fact that the matter referenced, which is order two twenty-five, which is a gift acceptance of funding from Mayor Gade Marl Foundation, which is time sensitive as the donor requires acceptance prior to the end of this calendar year. Submitted Counselor Tontar.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
So how about some explanation or debate? Yes, go right ahead, Counselor Z.
Oh, I, I can wait if the sponsor wants to speak first.
Yeah, I would like to. So the, the, this is the second year in a row, actually, that, that we have required an emergency preamble to, to address the Moral Foundation gift to the city. In this case, you know, again, they, they faced some difficulties getting this in earlier, apparently. And by their bylaws, they have to, the council has to approve it before they can write a check for the money and we have to do it by the end of the calendar year. Since this is the last meeting of the year, we need to do it tonight. And again, this is, we also, we did this last year as well, by the way, so.
Counselor Z? My only question relative to the need for an emergency is it says in the order that, you know, it was a directive dated November ninth. Was that their own internal directive that we're not privy to? You know, it just would be nice to avoid this and I don't know if the sponsor knows why it, you know, if it was from November, we couldn't have had an opportunity perhaps to talk about a little bit more. I just don't know what a funding directive is. Is that their process or our process?
That's their process, but I would defer to the Parks Department Director, who I believe is on. But I don't see her. She is.
Yes, she is.
Hi, good evening, councilors. I, I actually have to take some responsibility for not making this happen sooner. Part of it is because of the transition to the new mayor's aide. Last year, it was because it was in the middle midst of the transition. So this has been the responsibility of the mayor's aide in the past and Lois always just submitted this information to city council. Last year, we were in the midst of that transition and this year I just, I, I take responsibility. I should have sat down with the mayor's new aide and told her that this is the way it happens, that the one that morals submit their directive that her office, her, her job is to submit the information to city council. I realized too late that it had not been submitted. And so I contacted the finance director and said, you know, we really need to submit this directive before the end of the year and have it approved.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes, I, I just have a couple of questions for Director Reed. Have, so in terms of the content that is in the, in the projects that are identified, has this been discussed? Have they been discussed with the Parks Commission?
Yes, the Parks Commission is very much involved in this process. In fact, they make the, the initial recommendation to the mayor's office for the projects that are to be funded. And that's all, of course, vetted publicly and the recommendations are approved at a public meeting. And then they are, then they're approved by the mayor's office and then discussed at the annual meeting with the trustees of the foundation, after which the trustees go away and decide if they're going to confirm those recommendations or make their own recommendations.
Okay, that is good to hear. And, and just out of curiosity, when you have these projects, what if there's a change? Are they fairly flexible with, if something has to kind of get tweaked here or there, maybe some other smaller project just comes up?
Absolutely. We work very closely with them throughout the year. And if something needs to change, they will regroup as a, as a, as a foundation and they can make, make an adjustment to their recommendation or bring it forward to the next year to change the recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm all set.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, did you call the emergency together with the underlying? I don't remember.
I didn't. I think we were just doing it one at a time.
Okay. Any further discussion on the emergency? I'm gonna, do we have to? We don't have to do a roll call, right? Just do a.
We do now. We need a two-thirds. Roll call is not necessary.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I think that carries. So on to the underlying motion.
Which is order two twenty-four, which simply states the same that we with gratitude accept the gift in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars to be expended in accordance with the foundation's funding directive dated November ninth. Submitted Counselor Tontar.
Any further discussion on this one? Yes, Counselor Z?
Order, Mr. President, do we have a, a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve?
Now we do. How about a second?
Second.
Discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, my only question for Director Reed is just on the human resources. So I know that's been a, a question mark during COVID and during our budget discussions. It seems like most of these or almost all of them, or perhaps even all of them would be done by external third parties. Is, am I reading that correctly? And that, you know, in other words, are we taking relatively precious resources from the, the, the human power that we have on the parks to do these? Or are these just bring in somebody to do fencing, bring in somebody to do the, the walkway? It says some, some folks will be hired. And then the irrigation, while it sounds like a third party, the only one I'm not sure on is the Bartlett Mall restoration.
You are right. In the past, we have budgeted in, in many cases, according to what we could do in-house. However, because of the strain on the city's resources, in, in great part because of the pandemic budget impacts, we have applied this year to use all third-party resources. In fact, the Joppa Park project was originally funded. Last year, we thought that we could get the whole thing done with the, the funding that the, the foundation had given us. But that was based on using in-house resources. And then when the pandemic hit, we realized we couldn't do that. So this year we went back to them and we said, look, for another ten thousand, we can get this done using temporary staff. If we can hire a temporary team to do, to, to provide the manpower, we can get it done without taxing our in-house staff. So that has been the approach this year.
Okay, thank you very much. All set.
Counselor Tontar?
Yeah, Director Reed, just, just the, the letter from the Moral Foundation notes that of, of the previous allotments, the gazebo restoration in Atkinson Common was completed. Spectacular job, I, I might say. And you just mentioned Drop a Flash. There was also in the Bartlett Mall, there was a sixty-six thousand five hundred dollars for the playground. Tracy Square, eight thousand dollars, trees, four thousand. And, and my understanding is because of the pandemic, you didn't get to that, but the foundation is, is willing to give you the city more time to, to finish those projects. Is, is that basically what happened?
Well, Tracy Square is actually well underway. The purchasing has been done for that project. We, we've just put on hold installation of the, the, there's a chess table that should be installed. It's because the park was being used for outdoor seating for restaurants. We kind of put things on hold. Other projects, we've made progress on them. We just haven't reached a point of completing them. As far as the Bartlett Mall project, their funding was not allocated toward the playground at all. It, I mean, it's, it, it was allocated toward work that will support the playground project because it's all related, because it has to do with earth moving in that area. But, um, but that, that's a larger project that has yet to be designed. So at this point, we are using those funds to support grant matching. They won't, they don't fund the design. So we're still working on getting the design done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes. Next.
Again, an emergency preamble, suspension of parking fees during the holiday period between November nineteenth and December twenty-sixth. This time sensitive for the obvious reason, we have no council meeting between now and then. And that's submitted by Counselor Z.
Motion to approve collectively two twenty-five EP and two twenty-five together, please.
Second.
Counselor Tontar?
Yeah, I'm gonna be.
Well, well, actually first, Counselor Z, I'm sorry, that's my. Oh, sorry. I, this is, this is, I mean, I think most counselors know something we've done every year. I went back and pulled last year's order. I just happened to think of this and realized that it hadn't been done officially. And just to keep going with the, with the process, I, I put this in, the dates again are concurrent with last year, including when we had some debate on the floor and we added the day after Christmas. So I just kept that consistent and thought that it'd be a nice thing to do. And we've tried to make some efforts this year to help out our downtown businesses. And this is actually something we do regularly anyway. So I thought it would be an appropriate thing. And sadly, we don't have another meeting or maybe not so sadly. So we, if we don't do it now, we'll sort of be out of time. So that's the reason for the emergency.
Thank you. Now Counselor Tontar, I apologize, Counselor. Go ahead.
I was just gonna be a little bit, bit of a pain in the neck and, and ask why this hadn't been done in a more timely fashion. But I'm just kind of joking.
You know, actually, if I may blame former counselor Jinta, he used to put this in.
Yeah, there you go. That's good.
Actually, and he can't, he's not here to defend himself. So I hope that that's acceptable to everybody.
Fine with me.
Further discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so both of those are approved collectively.
Next, we ready to go, Mr. President?
Roll.
Order two twenty-six, which again, not surprisingly, is an emergency preamble. The amendment to order one ninety-seven is time sensitive in as much as the ad hoc. The amendment to order one ninety seven is time sensitive inasmuch as the ad hoc committee shall review responses to the RFP related thereto and recommend a preferred bidder to the city council and the mayor for their approval no later than February first. This is submitted by none other than Counselor Augment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, I should have said, is there emergency? Yeah. So motion to collectively approve two twenty six EP and two twenty six.
Second.
I I can answer questions, but I think it's self explanatory if anyone has any questions. Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Those pass collectively. So. Now we have order two twenty nine that came on late file.
I think we have two twenty seven, Mr. President.
Separate, yeah.
Okay. Shall I go with two twenty seven, that upon the recommendation of the mayor city council, hereby appropriates from the waterfront paid parking fund, the sum of seventy five thousand dollars to be used to compensate the qualified consultant team to be selected through the request for proposals on so called RFP issued by the city's Office of Planning and Development on November seventeenth, entitled in order implementing chapter ninety six of the acts of two thousand twenty. Mayor is hereby also also authorized to execute and enter into any contracts or agreements. Again, submitted Counselor Augment.
Motion to refer to the ad hoc on waterfront. Was the intent to have an emergency on this? Or?
No, it's not an emergency.
So then, yes, motion to refer to the God, we just renamed it, the ad hoc committee of the city of council established pursuant to order one ninety seven.
Anyone else? All those in favor referring, please say aye.
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 Thanks. I'm done guessing. What's next?
Order twenty two twenty nine, which is the late file, which is the order relative to the disposition and funding for the rehab of the Farmer Brown School and the purchase and disposition of the city property known as lot A one at fifty seven Low Street. It goes on for a number of well written whereas's. And then there are two separate orders, one relative to the Brown School site and one relative to the fifty seven Low Street and it's jointly submitted Counselors Z and Augment.
A motion to refer to budget and finance, planning and development and committee of the whole.
Second.
Okay, but again, I want to give Counselor Khan a chance here. Counselor Khan, are you gonna sit this one out? Yeah, okay. Counselor Khan.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I actually wasn't planning on saying this one out and I will I could file something disclosure with city because it's not related to zoning. So that was not my intention.
Okay, so you're gonna file something. All right, Counselor Z.
Yes, thank you. I I know that we we scoff at talking about things on the way in. But I need to just say a few things and I'll try and keep them as short as possible. So I think during public comment, you know, one resident mentioned sort of the frustration with the timeline. And and I just thought that hit the nail on the head. So I wanted to speak to it. You know, it's been some seven years since any child last stepped into the Brown School as a school. It's been six years since youth services moved to the Kelly School and then out of the Kelly School and then the Kelly School was sold, leaving some proceeds, some seven hundred thousand dollars. Three years ago, we undertook an RFP to to, you know, sell a portion of the Brown School and to keep youth services on the ground floor. Eighteen months ago, spent a long time on a zoning amendment that you just heard about about the Brown School with respect to to potential for housing there. A year ago plus, we funded a feasibility study on Low Street and we got that back. Some months ago, I asked, as as we recounted during the mayor's comment about whether or not, you know, this this plan or project was alive or dead, so to say, building a new building at Low Street. So there certainly has been a long history. And I think we're kind of here we are today. I don't know about my colleagues here, but I spent the weekend responding to emails, trying to explain, you know, sort of some of that history and how we got here. And that actually, a lot of counselors, all counselors, I think, really do care about the kids. And it's not a question of whether we we love the kids or we hate the kids or we want to support them or we don't. It's just a matter of a lot of history bringing us to this point. So after Thursday's meeting, I apologize that the order that Counselor Augment and I brought in was a late file, but just trying to respond to Thursday night's meeting. And and I don't know how others felt attending it or participating in it, but felt that we were sort of arguing around the central issues as opposed to arguing directly on them. And and some of those questions are really pretty straightforward. What do we want to do with the Brown School? What do we want to do with the land? If we purchase it, what do we want to do with it? If that's the case? And, you know, with all due respect to the mayor, you know, unfortunately, the tune has changed several times and it's exceedingly difficult to be a counselor when you can't figure out the direction things want to go because you're either reacting to old information or you are proceeding down a path that you think you're on and then you find out that you're not. So while I respect that the mayor may feel that she's sort of listening to what's happening, to me, it seems like a bit of, you know, ignoring the last in seven years of work, really goes way back to when the Brown School was decommissioned, even before my time on the council, to several studies that were done and so forth. And secondarily, it's not clear to me what has really changed. You know, in fact, you know, COVID is here. That was the initial sort of reason for bailing out, if you will, on the new building. And then, you know, that hasn't changed. The fire station and paying for that's a big thing. Now, I don't know how we got there, but we're talking about fifteen million dollars. So I I really it it. I don't think the process has been good or fair to counselors. And that's one aspect. I actually don't think it's been good or fair to staff either, who are trying to execute a plan that basically doesn't exist or changes. But most importantly, it's not fair to the residents and to the kids and to the thirty people that showed up today to talk to us, sort of assuming that this is the first crack we've had at this. And we just started talking about it last week. That isn't the case. We've been actually debating this for quite some time, years. In fact, Jared and I have sat through numerous neighborhood meetings. One email I received mentioned the Butters. I happen to know a thing about that at the Brown School. And we've talked about what the Brown School can and can't do. Another resident today talked about the costs of rehab rehabilitating the Brown School. That's been talked about considerably and studies have been done against that. So I I still think even today, we're not necessarily being fair and upfront with with residents about where this thing is going. If any counselor can sit here and say that we are going to bond fifteen million dollars for the fire stations, assuming that those numbers are correct and maybe continue to escalate, and we're going to bond on top of that eight to fifteen million dollars for youth services, even if it's done via debt exclusion, and we're if you if you forgot, we're going to build labs at the high school, which is actually something I'm very interested in at a cost of maybe fifteen million dollars, half of which is, say, covered by the state. And we're going to do roads and streets. I don't think that's being honest. So what we have here today, the proposal you have, is a solid, honest and earnest effort to debate the merits of what we're going to do about the Brown School and not to just sort of buy the land and kick the can down the road for another six months. That's not fair to residents or sixty days, as the case might be. We're going to have to get sharpen our pencils and decide what it is we want to do on this. And yes, we need to decide now because I, if you're asking me personally, and I'm certainly think consider myself educated on the topic, I think that, you know, Low Street has considerable issues with it as a site. But more importantly, it probably would be many years, not one or two years before you built there, but maybe five, maybe eight, maybe longer, depending on how long it takes. That's my view. So even if you don't agree with what this order says, and just for the benefit of residents who are tuning in, what does it say? It says that youth services would stay at the Brown School. It says that we would invest one point seven million dollars into that building, seven hundred thousand dollars of which is remainder from the Kelly School proceeds, which has been sitting around collecting dust and it should have gone into that building a long time ago. Plus, another million dollar bond, something that myself and my co sponsor are offering even in the midst of a pandemic to show that we do care and that we do think that investment is necessary. And in fact, that hasn't been controversial. Everybody has recognized the Brown School needs to be loved and to be rehabilitated. And in a lot of ways, it's akin to some other arguments we've had about preserving old buildings and using them rather than just building new. And then it says, yes, we're going to buy the Low Street building, but we're also going to be upfront. What we're what we're going to do with it? We're going to give a portion of it to parks. We're going to give a portion of it to schools. All of this is subject to debate. All of it is subject to discussion. But I hope you'll agree that at least gets to the heart of the issue. And I think if we tell residents, yep, we just need a couple more weeks to spin our wheels and then we're going to buy the land and we'll figure the rest out later, is not really being honest about what we can afford, when we can afford it, and what residents should expect. And most importantly, and lastly, it's not fair on the timeline either. You know, if you're frustrated about how I started this story and residents recounted years and years of work, you know, do we really want to be sitting here saying the same stuff, whether it's the eleven of us or eleven new people, talking about the Brown School and Low Street in two thousand twenty three, then we need to get serious about it and basically figure out how we're going to get there. I've had the same exchange with many residents by email. I don't hide from my position. I've never loved Low Street, even pre pandemic. I never thought that financially I could figure out how it fit into what we could afford. So I I hope that the goal of this order is to confront those questions. Just just no way around it to stop beating around the bush with CRs and other discussion and get right to the heart of the matter, debate those, and hopefully come to a conclusion. And I I would appreciate it if you would help me by sending it to committee so we can have that debate and hopefully resolve it in in as little as sixty days and move on with it. Thank you.
Counselor Khan, is your hand up? Counselor Khan.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I first of all, I thank the sponsors for bringing this before us and I will be supporting sending it to the committees and council committee of the whole. I I think there's a real good dialogue and conversation that we haven't had yet. And I think this, if this is the vehicle to get to that dialogue, then then I am in all favor of that. And I think the dialogue, while it's very specific here and in terms of the steps and what to do, that the big question that we haven't had a chance to really deliberate or talk about is really the the future of Newburyport Youth Services and where would it be best best located to serve the the interest, the needs of all the residents? And we know that there've been, there is a Brown School reuse or a committee currently on. I don't know the exact name. I I tried to find the website for it, but I know Counselor Wallace is sitting on that where they're talking about youth services and and some people in public comment mentioned that they're also part of that committee. So it would be nice to be able to bring these different kind of arms or vehicles of of process that are being done and to have a place where we could hear these updates. And I especially, I want to thank Counselor Wallace for the communication because the very last item there is to be able to see the feasibility study, which granted, we all got to see a presentation, which was, you know, very beautifully in terms of graphics and visually appealing in the presentation format. But it wasn't a report. And I I really do feel like that's going to be another piece that we're going to need. We need all these items to really look at what was put, what is put before us before we could have that really very, I guess, thoughtful discussion and debate. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next is Counselor Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to the sponsor. I appreciate the effort at the discussion, the debate. I'm going to vote no, not because I don't appreciate the the effort to get the matter on the table and for the discussion to be had. I don't think it's appropriate that this needs to be a late file. We talk about late files quite often and the appropriateness of them. I think that this could have come up at the first meeting after the beginning of the year. I also find the language to be so weighed towards, you know, youth services being in the Brown School. I mean, it's, I think that that is truly a debatable point. I'd like to have seen a document such as this that was perhaps a little bit more generic in its in its approaches and its topics to be discussed. I'm sure it'll go to committee and I certainly will participate. But I'm just going to vote no on those principles that I just mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McColl.
Yes, I'm a yes on sending it to committee. And my rationale for that is it took us a long time the other night to get to the real issues. And the issues at hand were everyone was very good people had different pieces of information and no one collectively was able to put all the pieces together. It took us, as I said, it took us a while the other night to get there. But I think that fundamentally, what we need is an act like in an order like this to, in a way, throw it all on the table. There are a lot of moving pieces. And I think we should address all of the moving pieces all at once. And if we do that, I think we'll come to a more complete answer. And we may solve three or four or five different issues that had come up that were simmering just under the surface the other night. So I welcome the debate and I welcome the transparency that this discussion will bring to it, both for us as counselors and especially for the residents who, you know, as we responded to them, realized that they had twenty percent of the information and and some of them had another twenty percent. And as we had the debate, the answer was, none of us have a hundred percent of the information. I think we will. So again, I'm supporting this and I'm a yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Tontar.
Yes, thank you. I I favor sending this to Budget, Finance, Plan and Development Committee of the whole. And I want to make clear as to why that's the case. Generally, we are a body of reason. And we are a body that is informed by evidence. And I, if you notice, over my seven years on the council, I I have never voted not to send something to committee. Doesn't mean I support it. It means that I want to vet it. I want to consider it. And I take the ideas of my colleagues seriously. And and I want the opportunity to consider it. So I will vote in favor.
Thank you, Counselor. Back to the moving Counselor. Counselor Z.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to respond to the out large Counselors' points. And number one is, again, I offer my apology that this came in as a late file. I don't want to do that lightly, but at the same time, we met on Thursday and this is the next opportunity. And I think, you know, I'm going to be certainly thinking about this through the holidays so that when we come back next year, we have a frame of discussion, or at least I do have a good idea of of where I would like to go. And and obviously have made this sort of offer to you. And and that goes to the second point. You know, for those that are listening out there, I I don't want to be unequivocal or sort of just not clear. Yes, this is a very concrete proposal. It is very specific. It calls for very specific things. It calls for nearly two million dollars to go to youth services at the Brown School. And I think that's important. I think we've had actually how we got here was sort of more generic stuff, you know, hey, youth services is important. Hey, you know, we'd really like to have a a place for parks or let's just buy the land and we'll figure it out later. So I can appreciate that, you know, this is a tough decision. And I, you know, I think the other at large Counselor, I appreciate his comments and willingness to at least hear the idea here. It's not an easy decision. And as I shared with residents, too, there are plenty of pros and cons to all of these plans to keeping them at Brown School, the youth services, moving to Low Street. But again, respectfully, it sort of is calling the question here. What do we want to do? And can we afford it? So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands. All those in favor referring it to planning and development, budget and finance and committee of the whole, please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
I got I got one no, Rich.
Yes, I've got it, Mr. President.
Okay, okay. Thank you. What's what's our next prize?
We're we're on to ordinance sixty five, which is a second reading. It is the senior citizen property tax work off program. The pertinent part is that those homeowners who are sixty or over are provided the opportunity to participate in the tax work off program. Maybe the pertinent line is the maximum amount of the abatement shall be fifteen hundred dollars per fiscal year. And to be administered again by the mayor's office in conjunction with the director of council on aging. That fifteen hundred has been changed from one thousand, which was the previous ordinance. Second reading, jointly submitted Counselors Connell and Khan.
Okay, anyone want to speak on the second reading?
I can't.
Okay, so you got a motion and a second. Does anyone want to speak on the second reading? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McColl.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
And Counselor Augment.
Yes.
Motion passes on second reading. And that would be it for the first part of our show.
All right, committee items. The ad hoc committee on economic development has not met. Having a feeling that things are going to get hairy in the new year, but right now we're just holding on. The ad hoc committee on expanding Market Landing Park, we haven't met. But as everyone knows, we're going to get responses to our requests for proposals. I think the deadline is the twenty third. So it's it's coming up fast next week. That's kind of exciting. And then we'll spend January. Thank you for extending. And then we'll spend January. Thank you for extending the deadline so we can see what came in. Budget and Finance.
Yes, thank you. First of all, for the public on Order 214, which is the purchase of 57 Low Street. On Thursday night, the Budget and Finance Committee by a vote of two to one did vote to put this before the council as chair. However, I am going to hold it into commi- in committee in light of the fact that DCAM is providing the city with an additional 60 days. And also in light of the fact that some counselors would like more information before they can decide how they want to vote. So I conferred with the chair of Planning and Development, Counselor Shan, and we, we are going to keep these in our respective committees for further discussion. So having said that, I would move to approve Transfer 86.
Your second?
Second.
Second.
Transfer 86 is a transfer of $3,867 from the Waterfront Parking Fund to Waterfront Park Maintenance. The background on this is the, the respective properties of the NRA and the Waterfront Trust. It's such close proximity that both entities work together in terms of landscaping and maintenance. And they had an agreement as to how to pay for that work that needed to be done on the waterfront. And, and Waterfront, the trust actually, you know, did the contract and the work and then the NRA would, would compensate them for the portion. So of course, the city now owns the, the land that the NRA did. And so this invoice simply represents the, the portion that the NRA would have paid for the landscaping and maintenance that was done. You'll note in the invoice, it says 0.27%. That's a typo. It should have been 27%. And that figure was arrived at in negotiations between the NRA and the trust. And we're just putting this forward. This, the city clerk wrote up a, a model contract based on, on the agreement that was previously reached, previously reached between the NRA and the, and the trust. That was given to the trust. The trust referred to their attorney. The attorney suggested a number of changes and my understanding is that now that contract has been referred to KP. Going forward, we, in the interim, we could receive some further invoices for the property the city now, now owns. However, it's not clear that we will because I, I'm not sure what the expenses are in the winter. So we didn't get a clear answer to that.
Thank you. Counselor Zee?
Yes, Mr. President. I, I support this and I did in committee and will do so here as well. But I just want to note on the record that I, I would like to please see the, even if it's a redlined agreement, just where it is now. I'd like to understand what the points of negotiation are and so forth. So I don't really know whose hands that's actually in, if it's in the clerks or if it's really in the mayor's office. But if we could, I don't know if others are interested, but it may be instructive if the council can see it. And again, understanding that it's a draft, just so that we can kind of see where we might be headed. Cause I, I agree with the chair. We, we don't really know if we're getting more invoices. I, I suspect we will. I just don't know when. So that would be helpful.
All right. Well, the, the property is in the custody of the city council now. So Clerk Jones, could you just get your hands on whatever the document is and send it around?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Anyone else? No. All those in favor of the transfer, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Transfer passes.
Motion to approve Transfer 87.
Second.
Trent, Mr. President, Transfer 87 is the transfer of $2,500 that was originally sourced from the Electrical Revolving Fund, but, and, and was to go to a fence mural project at the Harris Street parking lot. That was, the, the committee voted to approve this three to zero under the condition that the source of the $2,500 come from the paid parking fund rather than the electrical revolving fund. Let me, let me just give you the reasoning behind that. The Electrical Revolving Fund is, you know, the, a number of these revolving funds, we, the council has noted that they are accumulating some funds. I think the administration thought that this would be one way to, to work it down. By, by law, they can be used for, for any legal purpose approved by the council and the, and the mayor. And so that, in a way, they're, they're very similar to free cash. As they are liquid, they can be used and, and, and the at-large council, Counselor Khan, thought that it would be better to, to preserve those funds to be used citywide. The Ward One Counselor suggested that we, that we tap the paid parking fund and ask the administration to do it and they agreed. What this is, is originally, and a butter actually to, to Harris Street Park, Mr. Walter Thompson, for a couple of years now, has been working on, on replacement of the fence and he had the idea to put murals on it. He approached the Institution for Savings and the, and the Mary Alice Echolakian Foundation for Funds. He was granted $10,000. He did actually quite a bit of work in getting estimates for the cost. However, from the time that the grant was given and, and the, the estimates were arrived at, we passed an ordinance that, that on downtown fences, meaning certain historic criteria in terms of design. So the, the cost of doing the whole project, which originally could have been done for 10,000, now costs 12,500. So the request was $2,500 to complete the project. So again, in committee, we voted three to zero to support the transfer of 2,500 now from the paid parking, downtown paid parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes as well.
Motion to approve Order 222.
Second.
Second.
This is the order which was previously referred to by the Veterans Agent, which would entail accepting of Clause 22A to Chapter 59, Section 5, as well as Clause 22G, Clause 22H, was passed in 2018, is known as the Brave Act and would go into effect July 1st next year, 2021. And it provides a full exemption in property taxes to the parents who have survived the loss of a son or daughter in service to the country. And also Clause 22G, which refers to ownership of a plot that is owned by a trustee from the Veterans Benefit and, and that, that would also be eligible for exemptions, even though they're not, you know, the deed is in the name of the trust. By three to zero, the committee supported both. We did, we did raise, one, one council did raise the question, you know, as to its impact on the, on the city's finances in, in the circumstance of a large war. I, I asked actually the, the city clerk, the impact of Vietnam War. There were six Newburyport residents who lost their lives during the Vietnam War. I think that this is something that we should do. I can't fathom the loss of, of a child in service to the country, the pain that must entail. And it's a small gesture and I think we all, we all think we should do that gesture. In the circumstance of a larger war such as World War II, I think the committee would face much more significant problems than, than fiscal ones. So I think we all support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
All done, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Chair Khan, Education.
Yes, thank you, Council President. So the Education Committee will be meeting on December 21st. We were supposed to meet last week on Monday and there was some directives of going to, from fully in person to fully remote and some other things that had come up for the school committee. It made sense then to move to next Monday where we will talk a little bit about the, what the committee's working on, which is on the Acts of 1987 and coming up with some type of a response and some research that myself and the co-chair for my education committee, Sean Riordan, and I are working on. And the agenda also includes a little bit, as you will see on January 12th, I believe, there's going to be a city council and a school committee meeting, joint meeting. So I'm hoping in advance of that to, to have some questions from the education committee and the school committee together jointly on anything that might help us prior to that, in, in those conversations. The agenda is posted, as are the Zoom details. It will be fully remote meeting on the 21st. And if folks have anything they'd, anything further they want to ask me or if they want to listen in, please do join us on the 21st. Thank you.
Thank you. General Government, I'll give a report. I, I owe the General Government Committee a document, which I didn't get to them in time for their review to get into the packet. So didn't make it in 2020. Licenses and permits. Counselor Devlin, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
All right. Neighborhood and City Services, Chair Connell?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Chair Shan, Planning and Development?
All right. So, thank you, Mr. President. Similar to what my counterpart from Budget and Finance is, did with Order 214, our committee voted two to one to bring it out tonight, but we did not have any recommendation given the status of what we have with DCAM now with the additional 60 days. I'm going to hold that in committee along with Communication 270 as well, since it is also pertinent to the discussion about the Low Street purchase. So those two will stay in committee. Also, Communication 214, we've decided to keep that in committee as well as we found out that the preservation restriction on the Central Congregational Church has yet to go through mass historic. So in light of that, that communication will also stay in committee. So last but not least though, we do have Order 233 Preservation Restriction on the Custom House. So motion to approve.
Second.
All right. So discussion. If folks took the time to check out the Redline Edition that we have in our packet, and I hope they did because you would note that our Rockstar Historic Commission did a great job defining the significant interior features inside the preservation, the, the custom house. I think if you had a chance to look at it, they go into great engineering detail on explaining the granite hanging staircase. And that's, it is well written. They go into details on the Mason growing vaults and how they are varying in the elliptical shaped rooms. They do a really nice job of just defining all of these interior features, which is not common for some of our preservation restrictions. Most of our restrictions are typically outside the four walls and the windows. This one goes into detail of those interior features. They also go into the original doors, the marble flooring, and they do a good job of explaining the, the open space out back. They also list the addition of the details where the custom house plans to document and protect the artifacts in the museum. So this definitely does strengthen the preservation restriction that we had put, that we had voted on over a year ago. So with all that being stated, the committee did vote three to zero to approve this restriction on the custom house for the City of Newburyport.
Any other discussion? Let's do a roll call because it's real property and it's going to go on record and, and Salem.
This is a motion to approve Order 223 Preservation Restriction on the Custom House. Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCollough?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Ragman?
Yes.
Thank you.
You all set? Chair Shan?
That is it for Planning and Development, Counselor President. Thank you.
Eventful year. Public Safety, Chair McCollough?
Thank you, Council President. I have three items tonight. Application 16, a motion to approve.
Second.
The application here is for the Old South Church to have an outdoor Christmas Eve service on Federal Street. We, at, at committee, we had Dr. Reverend Sarah Singleton come before us. She laid out a plan to have an outdoor Christmas Eve service in front of the church. They would close portion of Federal Street. They would expect somewhere around 100 people. They will follow CDC, Governor and Board of Health guidelines. They will have three people on a step as, as an altar with masks. There will be trash receptacles and no, there'll be no handouts. They went through and completed out the application. They had sign offs from fire, police. No one seems to have an issue with this. The Board of Health did, they did not recommend that we move forward with this. However, in, in the Governor's New Order 57, in paragraphs two, three, and four, they specifically call out worship services on Christmas Eve to over 50 people, provided that masks are worn and non-household units remain six feet apart. So we, we voted in committee to bring it forward and to, and since it was time sensitive and Board of Health sensitive, you know, CDC, Governor compliance sensitive as well, we, we, we look for a recommendation from the council.
Any other questions or comments from counselors before we vote? Yes, Counselor Tontar?
Yeah, in their application, I think the number is five, number of attendees expected, it says 110, six feet apart from one another. And then parenthetically, this is the area of the street and sidewalks does not include our own side lawn or school street sidewalk. So the question, does that, do they expect more people?
They do, they do not. They, they're not even sure they're going to get 110. They usually have about 120 people on an average service. They, they're, they're overestimating. They have mapped out a, an area on Federal Street in front of their building that is within the confines of the street. And they, if, if they needed, let's say more space for those people, if it was eight feet or 10 feet or those types of, those types of restrictions that were put on, they could expand into their own private garden and parking area and things like that. So that, that was, they do not expect more people, but they're trying to manage, you know, the ever-moving guidelines that happen, right?
And, and what was the public health, what, did they go to the board or just the director? And, and
They
They indicated, no, they suggested that not be done, right? Is that correct?
They, so there's a fine line there, right? Because it, the health director didn't think it was a good idea and he would not recommend it. But there's a religious exemption that overrides the Board of, the Health Director's opinion.
There is. And, and we got that from AP law?
No, we got that from the Governor's Order 57. No, we got that from the governor's order fifty seven.
Councillor.
Thank you.
Okay, you're all set. Councillor Z.
Oh, thank you, I I I will support this. For, I think they've they've shown good effort here to comply with everything and and I, you know, usually think we look towards the state for some of the guidelines on on these things and I do think there's a First Amendment issue in this discussion as well, so I'm supportive of it, my only question is you know, the bottom of Federal Street is actually Ward one, and so my question is during that six thirty to eight P M time, do they have any idea how they're going to move the traffic around, is it going to go you know, across and then down one of the side streets towards Plum Island, let's say, and then come down to Water Street because Federal Street is, you know, fairly sizable street and does just carry a lot of cars and there's some businesses obviously at the tannery at the bottom there, so I just, did that come up in discussion or or did they discuss that with the police? To say
They did discuss it with the
Okay.
They did discuss it with the police, they'll put up some barricades at crossing streets for the hour and then take them down.
And they're they're on the application, it says school and middle. To school and middle, so it's it's it doesn't go down to Liberty.
It doesn't go down to Liberty, okay.
No, no.
Thank you, I'm all set, thank you.
Councillor Vogel.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, to the chair, if I may. I I had similar questions about the informational information or the the informational packets that are going out to the neighbors or to the people across the street. Have you seen that information and then are they also going to be restricting parking?
They have, they did not share informational packets, information, I think they plan to address the butters in person or as best they can directly. So I did not see that packet and they did not plan to restrict parking. However, you know, I'm sure and we did not get to it, but within that, within that buffer zone, you probably can get out, but you can't get in.
Thank you.
Count, wait, well, I have a question before we go back to councillors Z. So it says in their application that they're in the process, but I councillor, a large Vogels question is well taken, so they they gave you an assurance, they will contact all the people on that block.
They, yes, and their point was they're waiting to see if there was approval prior to contacting the butters.
All right, that's fair, I just want to make sure they know that that we're not going to be notifying them, it's really on the applicant to do that. Make sure they contacted, if we happen to approve this tonight, okay, councillors Z.
Yeah, I actually, I was going in the same direction, but I I think we should actually condition the approval upon that notification. Because I I don't think everybody wants to get these phone calls, so I don't know that conditioning it, in in the past, we've required, say, for example, them to go knock on the doors, but I don't think that's probably a good idea, so what I suggest is we condition this on the notion that they will flyer the impacted households and they will take responsibility for that, I do think that that should be their responsibility and neighbor should know, I also think it will save some consternation that evening. So so that residents are well aware in the immediate area that this is happening.
Is that a proposal?
It is, yes, I mean, I I think it's nine forty or nine twenty. Clerk Jones is usually the word smith of the night, so maybe he can make it prettier, but you get the the point, they need to flyer. And I think this is where this is is Ward two, so you might know the exact streets, but sort of like one block up and one block down and and maybe
Yeah, I I can, I can work with Chair McCauley, but I'll second the motion. Anyone else want to speak on the motion, it's just going to condition the approval on flyering the block.
The expected impact area, yeah.
Yeah, the block. No, okay, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so now we're at the underlying approval as amended, anything else on this one? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. No, there's a, we got one no.
One no.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair, I'd like to move to approve, move to receive and file communication two seventy eight, the compost guidelines.
I can.
Second. Tell us about it.
So this is a this is the next generation conversation that we're having about waste. There's a group put together Aces, which is a group of adults and and students that are looking at how they can address environmental issues. Their first project really of heft is putting together a compost guide. It's part of our campaign to educate the public to show members of the public the different ways that they can impact and be greener. We heard about the impact, the economic impact of composting, increased costs and decreased capacity of waste. We know that compost weight is the majority of weight waste for the most part in our household trash. There's a campaign and to go from six hundred homes to nine hundred homes this next calendar year, there's an ask that not only that we receive and file this, that we as councillors share this information with our wards and also post it on the city website, it's already posted on the sustainability website on the city, but the whole idea here is that there's a collective program to educate the public about the benefits of composting either through a vendor, Black Earth or Mona, or even do it yourself along the way. This guide lays out that structure, thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Seeing that all is in favor of receiving and filing, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Next.
And the last one is communication two twenty seven, which was an update and request from the waste stream task force. Basically, this, the compost guidelines took what the waste stream was doing and then took it to the next level and created this composting guide, so I'm asking for a receiving file on this on this western task force communication, thank you.
Any other discussion on their receipt and file? Seeing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Could we have a second on that motion?
I'll second, oh.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much, council president, I have nothing else.
Public utilities.
Nothing, just a quick note, construction on the revetment behind the wastewater treatment plant has commenced, so I'm sure residents noticed because the trail is again closed back there. And that will be the condition for some time until the project is complete, so try and provide updates as we go, but that's why it's closed and Water Street detour that was used for some time during the PCB cleanup is sort of in effect again, so lots of folks walking and enjoying that path for the time being, thanks.
Thank you. Rules, Chair Vogel.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you, just an update, we have before us the rule regarding emails and the I T director has been unavailable for conversation over the last several weeks, so I'm waiting to to talk with him, so it'll be after the first of the year. I have a number of questions. I've talked to him before in the past about which email client is workable and so on and so forth, so I'll put together my my questions, I'll put it out to committee of the whole. Ask for some questions back from you and then we'll schedule a meeting with the I T director.
Thank you. Good of the order. Councillor Khan.
Yes, thank you, council president, I just want to let folks know the ordinance review committee is meeting on Thursday at four P M. And we are talking about some, if folks want to know, there is a website dedicated to our efforts with some of the documents that we've preliminarily started developing, such as the review guidelines. But there there's a lot of good efforts coming out of this and I, if anyone's interested, you're welcome to to listen in, thank you.
Thank you. Other councillors? Seeing none, I just want to thank everyone for their work, bizarre year to say the least. Some of you will encounter again in committee hearings, but some of you we won't. So Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. Thank you very much, how about a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.